I'd like to welcome everybody to the Southbridge Town Council meeting Monday, August 21st, 2023, 7:00 PM, McKinnon Council Chambers. Agenda item number one, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Two, roll call. Madam Secretary.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Chenier.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
Present.
Counselor Rivas.
Present.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Consider and Accept the Town Council Minutes, Meeting Minutes on Monday, August 7th, 2023. I didn't see them in my packet. So I'm going to move right on to Agenda Item Number Four, Subcommittee Reports. Department of Public Works, Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We had a meeting on August 16th. Agenda Items Number 16 and 17 are night on tonight's agenda. Our next meeting is August 28th, 6:00 PM in the Veterans Room. Thank you.
Education Services, three of us.
Thank you through you. We met on August 9th and discussed Items 14, 15, and 21 on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Moving on, General Gov, Counsel Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did not have a meeting and we were going to have one on the 14th. We decided there was real no need for one yet, so we're looking at September, I believe it's 6th, is the Wednesday after Labor Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Planning and Development, Counsel Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We met on Wednesday, August 16th, at 7:00 PM. There were four items on tonight's agenda, Numbers 9, 18, 19, and 20. There was good discussion on the rail trail design, the purpose of using Zen City Sil Space Websites, and there was discussion of the rationale behind hiring a temporary town planner. There's no future meeting scheduled at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Moving on to Protections of Persons and Property, Counsel Chenier.
Mr. Chairman, we had a meeting on August 16th and Items Number 9 and, I'm sorry, 10 and 11 is reported favorable.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, Chairman's Announcements. I got a couple of things. I'd just like to thank everybody that attended the Woo Socks game. I'd like to thank Counsel Adams. He's a connector to the organization. I got to throw the first pitch out. It was a lot of fun. I thank the counselors that were there that went on the field, the Veterans Agent, Senator Hope. I got a special thank you to Southbridge Fire Department and their color guard, Mr. Peck, to the ball out. It was Southbridge night on Friday and I was very proud that everybody that was there threw their pitch out there. None of them bounced before the catcher, so it was a successful evening. I have one other pleasant duty to perform. I'd like to go to the podium to do it. What we have here donated by the Chenier family, a placate for our acting town manager, Charlie Blanchard. Charlie, I want to thank you, you can come on up. I want to thank you very much for filling in in a time of need. Charlie Blanchard has always been a great neighbor from the north, Sturbridge, and one thing about Charlie is he's a tower of integrity. He gets the job done. He's held his ship together and now we're ready for Town Manager Joe Vett, but I just want to say a special thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. This is great. Thank you all very, very much. I didn't expect this at all, but I really, really appreciate it. I did just have a few words that I was going to, you know, point out that this is my last meeting and Jack will take over next week, but I want to let you know I've really enjoyed this. I think we've accomplished a lot together with the council. We've got through the budget. We've got some good contracts moving forward and I think we've tried to keep the ship of state moving along during this kind of turmoil time. And I really would like to thank the entire staff, all the department heads and the staff for all their support. They've done a great job. I've really enjoyed my time here. You've got a great community and thank you very much for the opportunity to serve. I really appreciate it.
Next Agenda Item, Agenda Item Number Six, Town Managers' Announcements.
That was it? No, thank you.
Charlie, thank you very much for that.
And thank you.
At this time, I'd like to move and to ask Counsel Marquetti to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to move Agenda Items Number 11 and 12 up to right after Town Manager's Announcements. 11 and 10 and 11, I'm sorry, 10 and 11. Thank you.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Is a motion and a second? Any discussion? All with a favor? Oppose unanimous of all present? At this time, we're going to go to Agenda Item Number 10, Vote to Approve the Town Manager's Recommendation to Appoint Carlos Dinghy as a Permanent Full-Time Police Lieutenant, State Ethics in Good Standing, Effective Immediately for an indefinite period.
So move.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion, there's a second. Chief?
If I could, through you, Mr. Chair, thank you. Good evening. Congratulations again, Charlie. It was great working with you. Just a little bit of history here, in June, we had four candidates take the Assessment Center through civil service for the promotion to Lieutenant. In August, on August 1st, actually, that civil services list was certified. I was told by the Assessment Center that gave the test that all four candidates could have easily done this job. They were all more than qualified, which is great news for us, for the community, for the future. You know, not every agency has that. We have four top-notch people applying for top-tier management positions. Here tonight, the two top scores from that exam, but I have to say there was a tie for first. One of the candidates who tied for first voluntarily withdrew. This is not a day shift position and unfortunately, due to family issues, he can only work days, so he voluntarily withdrew. So tonight are the top two scores. The first candidate who's behind me is Carlos Dinghy. He was born and raised in this community. He's a 20-year veteran out of department. He's got a master's degree. He's bilingual, although we've questioned how bilingual he is, but he is bilingual. He was 12 years in all seriousness as a supervisor of the detective unit and for those that were at our Subcommittee, being a supervisor of that unit like I was, it is 24/7, 365 days a year, holidays, nights, weekends, no breaks, and he has done it for 12 years very efficiently. He supervised our task force, Southern Wester County Task Force, for about 12 years also. In January, he started teaching at our police academy. In December, he became our accreditation manager. I could go on and on. He's coaching this community. He's part of the Cops and Kids Program. Multiple commendations, impeccable service record. I highly promote or highly recommend him for promotion to Lieutenant.
Subcommittee Chairman Recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, on both these appointments, the Subcommittee unanimously supported the appointments of Carlos Dinghy and Robert Salisbury.
If there's no further discussion, roll call.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Chenier.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Dow.
Yes.
Counselor Lazo.
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Montigny.
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz.
Yes.
Counselor Rivas.
Yes.
Unanimous of all present?
Thank you.
Would he like to make a speech?
No, Carlos probably, but we'll keep.
I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, through the town council for the vote. If I could thank the chief for his guidance over the years and his mentorship, along with, I've been fortunate enough to have deputy as my brother and his guidance. All the members of the Police Department for their support over the years, most importantly, family, they're all here, friends, my beautiful wife and my daughter. It's been a, it's been a hell of a ride and I'm looking forward to continuing the work. Thank you.
Please raise your hand. Do you, Carlos Dinghy Salisbury, perform all duties and command as a Lieutenant of the Southbridge Police Department for an indefinite period of time, faithfully and impartially according to laws of the Commonwealth and abide by the Charter and by laws of the Town of Southbridge? So help you God.
Yes, sir.
I just need you to sign your name right here. They also need to give you the EBITDA line and the conflict of interest, so if you would just sign your name right there. Thank you. Congratulations. Sorry for you.
to Appoint Robert M. Salisbury as a Permanent Full-Time Police Lieutenant, State Ethics in Good Standing, Effective Immediately for an indefinite period.
So move. Second.
Motion and second? Counsel, recommendation?
Again, Mr. Chairman, the Subcommittee voted unanimously to support Robert Salisbury as a permanent full-time lieutenant.
Thank you. Chief?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Before I start, I just want to wish Rihanna a 14th, happy 14th birthday, soon to be Lieutenant Salisbury's daughter. He did not ask me to do that, but I figure I would. Speech? No, no speech. She's going to be mad. Don't be mad at your dad, be mad at me. So again, Lieutenant, soon to be Lieutenant Salisbury was born and raised in this community also, 17-year veteran of the Police Department, has got a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, working on his masters. He was six years as a sergeant and similar to Detective Sergeant Dinghy at the time. He spent seven years in the detective unit. You heard me say it earlier, that is 24/7, 365 days a year, not an easy job. Worked numerous task force cases along with Lieutenant Dinghy. He was an auxiliary with our department for three years, Cops and Kids Program, coaching our community. Again, I could go on and on about both these gentlemen. Multiple commendations, impeccable work history, and I highly recommend them for appointment.
We have a motion and a second? Roll call.
Counselor Chenier.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Dow.
Yes.
Counselor Lazo.
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Montigny.
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz.
Yes.
Counselor Rivas.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Unanimous of all present? Thank you very much. Say a few words?
So I definitely was not prepared for this, but since Carlos kind of forced us into it, so first I'd be remiss if I didn't thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. He's the reason I'm here today. My mentor behind me, Deputy Chief Dinghy's brought me along that road. My family, my wife, my sister, my father, my daughter obviously is not public, public person, she took off, she's going to hate you for that later, but I had a little bit of time this weekend to think about tonight and the realization I came to is this, titles are titles, they're given to us and they're great and they serve a role, but the true meaning of this position is leadership and the men and women of the Southbridge Police Department that are here, probably stuffed way in the back, because there's a lot of people here, they're the people that really this means to, the opportunity to lead them going forward in this department and it's, with all being said, it's truly needed right now more than ever, so I really appreciate it. Thank you guys for the opportunity.
Do you, Robert Salisbury Salisbury, perform all duties and command as a Lieutenant of the Southbridge Police Department for an indefinite period of time, faithfully and impartially according to laws of the Commonwealth and abide by the Charter and by laws of the Town of Southbridge? So help you God.
I do.
I just need you to sign.
How do you do?
I do. Congratulations, you're proud of you. Thank you. Here you go. This is.
and I kind of think it would be a great fundraiser to have the Dinghy brothers go at it and see who the really tough one is.
I got my money on the older one.
Yeah, my money's on Carlos.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. No. Okay, we're going to move back to the presentations at this time. Joe Solhowski, Intern Experience Supporting Urban Agenda Grant. Look what that means. Where is the guy? No, I want to keep going. Do you want to leave? I can leave.
Thank you, Dave.
Hold on for a five-minute recess. We left off with the opening of Joe Solhowski. I got it. You're on the floor.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name's Joseph Sabowski. Until the end of June, I was PEG's intern in the Economic Development and Planning Office.
Hold on a minute, Josh. I don't own the cable TV. There it is. Okay, you're on.
Hello, everyone. My name is Joseph Sabowski. Until June, I was PEG's intern in the Economic Development and Planning Office. I was, along with the collaboration of the Southbridge Redevelopment Authority, I was tasked with overseeing the implementation of the Fiscal Year 2023 Urban Agenda Grant, so that's what I'm going to be presenting about today. So this is just a quick overview of the presentation. So first, I'll give a brief introduction of the grant, then we'll look at the concerts and programming, the mural at One Central Street, and then I'll give some concluding remarks and I'm happy to entertain any questions or comments anyone has. So as for the grant, so Southbridge received a Fiscal Year 2023 Urban Agenda Grant from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Economic Development. It was a Fiscal Year 2023 grant, so it was performance deadline June 30th, and the grant was intended to enhance the condition of the urban renewal area and attract private investment by funding a collection of projects and programs at the Central Street Pedestrian Plaza, which a couple of years ago underwent a significant renovation. And as part of the grant, the Southbridge Redevelopment Authority hosted a concert series and a couple other programming events. So the concert, concert series, which was coined Concerts on Central, took place on Friday and Saturday evenings in May and June at the Central Street Pedestrian Plaza. There were, there were 13 concerts scheduled over a span of seven weeks and the concerts featured a wide variety of musicians, playing genres that ranged from folk music to Latin jazz to reggae. And here's a sample of one of the concert posters here. Here's another sample of some concert materials and some other pictures from the events. Some more pictures from the concerts. And in addition to the concert series, the Southbridge Redevelopment Authority hosted a pair of community painting workshops at the Central Street Pedestrian Plaza. Community members had the opportunity to drop by and paint on a canvas free of charge and receive some tips from an artist couple. And on top of the painting workshops, we also commissioned a pair of artists to paint four-foot by eight-foot murals on some aluminum panels. One of the artists was Simone Germain, the vice president of the local Ruth Wells Art Center. And the vision, the ultimate vision for the panels is to be displayed throughout town to create a sense of place-making. Oops, sorry. You can see some pictures from the art workshop on the right here and there's some pictures of the mural panels in progress. And here's some pictures of the completed mural panels. And so this is just a brief summary of some of the efforts we made at trying to spread word about the concerts. So on a weekly basis, we distributed flyers and posted them on social media. Thanks to Charlie, we made it, we released a promotional video and we also engaged in some print and online advertising in Bosero and on radio advertising on WNY Radio and we also put a press release in the Southbridge News. And for a couple of events, we also posted on event listening websites, for example, the Worcester Mag, that of the Worcester Magazine. And just some lessons and takeaways. So one of the lessons that we learned is to begin promoting events earlier, given our June deadline and my onboarding in March, we kind of had to move expeditiously to schedule the concert series and the mural as well. So in future years, if we're fortunate enough to receive funding for another concert series, it behooves us all to kind of begin the process earlier that we create more time for marketing in advance. Another lesson was only book one performer for concert. We just tried that once, but the pickup and setup time is a little, little much without an independent sound person to try to switch between musicians. And then lastly, we had considerable difficulty with the weather. Unfortunately, four of the concerts were canceled entirely and a handful more were adversely impacted by weather either before or during the events. So in the future, it might be beneficial to consider rain contingencies, whether that might be at an alternate indoor location or potentially scheduling the concerts at a different time of year that's less prone to rain. And the grant also funded a new mural at One Central Street. So the mural process unfolded in several phases. So first, the Southbridge Redevelopment Authority conducted a search for talented regional muralists and outlined a vision for the mural in anticipation of sending out quotes to a handful of finalists. Meanwhile, we pressure washed the wall at One Central Street and re-pointed the areas in need of strengthening. And then finally, in late June, the artist we selected, Felipe Ortiz, completed the 40-foot by 60-foot mural that's on the wall today. And here's some pictures of the mural. Felipe did a fantastic job. And then just some lessons and takeaways. So, you know, we were fortunate to get a wonderful artist, but just in the future, it's always important to secure artists, quotes from artists and select a winner as far in advance as possible because their schedules can fill up. And the other thing is it's important to read up on laws protecting artists' rights. There's a couple of them that are important, like the Visual Artist Rights Act and the Massachusetts Art Preservation Act. I won't go into them here, but suffice to say, they're important when you're commissioning a mural. And, and finally, just for some concluding thoughts, I just wanted to say thank you first to the Southbridge Redevelopment Authority. As you all know, it takes a lot of sacrifice to participate in local governance, so I appreciate the Southbridge Redevelopment Authority putting in all the time and effort they did for months on end to make these events and projects a reality. Then also thank you again to PEG, Eric and Katie in the Economic Development Office. They were super helpful whenever I needed any help with anything. They were always there to lend a hand. And then most importantly, you know, thank you to all the members of the town who I interacted with. I had a really great time hosting the concerts, met a lot of great people and I'm really grateful for the opportunity. I learned a lot along the way in terms of professional development and then, as I alluded to earlier, I just had a great time. So if you all have any questions or comments, I'm happy to entertain them. Thank you for your time.
Any questions at this time? Counsel Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Earlier in your presentation, you had a slide that said that this would help enhance interest in businesses coming to Southbridge. I don't remember the exact words. So did it? Did more businesses come here because of this?
Right. Well, I think it's too early to tell, just based on one seasonal event, but I guess our hope for the concert series was to kind of attract people to downtown Southbridge, get them familiar with all the great restaurants and local stores in the area, kind of attract people to the downtown area. I don't necessarily have data on me today that I can point to, but I think the idea is a promising one in concept, just to get people to the downtown area and get them to appreciate, you know, all the great things that Southbridge has to offer.
And how long have we been doing the concerts on the Central Street?
Yep. So the first time, sorry to interrupt you, the first time we hosted the concert series was in 2021. We got a grant that year and then in 2022, there was no concert series at the Pedestrian Plaza. And so this was the second year of concerts. This, in 2021, there was, I think, a few weeks of concerts, six or seven, so this was on a much grander scale. So, you know, I think, I think there's areas where we can improve on, you know. I think in the future, you know, as word and knowledge spreads at the events, we can get more people to the downtown area. But I think, you know, as a, as a first kind of proof of concept that this was a, I think, a good event for the town and the people I spoke with who did attend really enjoyed the events, the locals in the area. And so, so hopefully in future years, if we're fortunate enough to get grant funding again, we might be able to make this a bigger event and something that people in the town look forward to on an annual basis.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Counsel Rivas?
Not a question, but a comment. Thank you so much for the presentation, Joe, and for all the hard work along with the Economic Development Office and the Redevelopment Authority. I am one of those people that attended quite a few of the concerts and I think that it reminds me of sort of when we had the street festivals on Main Street where the street was closed down and people were out en masse. And I think that there is potential for that to come back to the area. The mural is beautiful if people haven't really gone, you know, down there and really looked at it. It just brings a vibrancy to the center of town and I think there, it's going to take a few years to really do this consistently before we get the results that we're asking for. But I think that it does, it does promote that area and it does remind me of, of those events in the past and I think that we can get back to sort of those, you know, that kind of atmosphere in the downtown area if we just give it a little more time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Joe. I appreciate your time and your energies in all this. I know it's, it's hard to do, especially when you have a one year and then a cutoff and a one year and then hopefully this, this works. Did you see, I know you weren't here in 2021, based on conversation, was there more people this year than there was two years ago that attended or was it dependent on the band, the music?
Yeah, I, I don't have hard figures for 2021. I know this year usually on average, we'd get like, you know, 15 to 25 people usually. Unfortunately, the weather was just a big challenge, you know, we had to cancel for the concerts and then on several occasions, it ran, it downboured like immediately before the event, which is just challenging because, you know, I know what I would think if it downboured, I'd be like, well, today's not a day to go out. So I think unfortunately because of that reason, we kind of had struggle building momentum over the, over the time span just because a number of them got canceled due to weather. But I think, you know, I think in, in occasions there, there were like, you know, 25 to 30 people on some occasions and I think it does sometimes depend on the music group, so there's always trial and error there about what groups people are most of you attracted to, so.
Very well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, I'd like to thank you very much. Job well done. Moving on to our second presentation, Counsel John Daniels, The Rail Trail Update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Counsel and people at home and here in the council chambers. The council lords are getting a copy of the chambers. The council lords are getting a copy of the bullet points that I'll be talking about tonight. Rather than go on a long story, I felt that the bullet points might be better and more impactful. This is for the benefit of the people at home as much as it is for councilors here, just to give us some background on the trail and events leading up to where we are tonight and one of the agenda items coming up in the near future. Back in 2017 through 2019, there was a million dollars, that was earmarked toward the town being able to construct the rail trail spur, I believe, between the Golden Greek and the Dudley Town Line. The town wasn't ready to enter into a lease for a number of reasons. And we were, we forfeited $650,000 back to the state, I believe. And the state used another $350,000 to do stabilization work on that spur. So some work was done on the trail itself, but the town really wasn't able to get it going in terms of getting some progress on really, really developing a good trail, something that the town could be proud of. In November of 2020, after the departure of Rosemary and with the splitting of job duties between PEG Dean and Eric Rumsey, the pursuit of the rail trail was given top priority following the wishes of the town council. The council never really gave up on the trail, but we kind of reached an impasse. And it seemed like we were stuck where we were. And then with PEG coming on, we felt that, well, let's give it another shot. And PEG was up to the challenge and said, yeah, I'll, I'll give that a top shot. She felt it was the priority of the council. And PEG reads the council well, and she knows that we were serious about it. And she figured she'd put her time and energy into it. In January of 2021, PEG provided a history of the rail trail to the council to that point and suggested potential funding sources to help get pursuit of the trail up and running. Included was a request for a brownfields site assessment to be funded by the Central Mass Regional Planning Committee. In May of 21, after learning that the Mass Trails Grant was a possible funding source, it became known to us that a lease with Mass DOT, Department of Transportation, would be needed to move forward with the trails grant application. In August of 2021, by using the Quinabag Rail Trail account, which had a $15,000 balance in it, the town council approved spending $8,900 of that account to hire a licensed site professional and consultant to assist in a grant application for the Economic Development Administration's Travel, Tourism and Outdoor Recreation Grant. PEG's continued research and networking was beginning to pay dividends at that early time. In February of 2022, a request was made for $400,000 in ARPA funds, which was part of, I believe, a matching grant that we needed to provide, matching funds that we needed to provide to show the grantees that we were, the grantors that we meant business about putting a trail together. In March of 22, a grant request was made from the Economic Development Administration Tourism Grant for a total of $4.1 million. It was broken down as $2.6 million coming from the EDA and a contribution of 1.5 coming from a combination of the Mass DOT and the town. In April of 22, having a letter of intent to enter into a lease between the town and the Mass DOT, the town then could apply for the Mass Trails Grant for $500,000. So grant after grant after grant, due to PEG's networking and digging deep for us. In June of 2022, the town was awarded the EDA Tourism Grant. It was required in the grant as a condition of our being awarded the grant that work start by October of '23 and be finished by December of 2024. Again, in June of 2022, the town was awarded the Mass Trails Grant for $500,000. As a result, the town turned back $300,000 to ARPA funding, which was raised initially as the local match. In July of 2022, the town applied for the Park Grant to acquire property adjacent to the trail with the purpose of further enhancing the desirability of the trail. This property was marked for demolition in the 2011 Urban Renewal Plan. In October of 22, the town has awarded the Park Grant to acquire the Central Street property before June 30 of 2023. Again, in October of 22, the town hired the BSC Group to complete the rail trail design. So there's progress being made. There's an idea of where the trail is going to be and how it's going to look. And we're hiring people now to get involved in putting that down in concrete for us. The grants are falling into place. Things are looking good. In February of '23, the Mass Department of Transportation advised that no action can be taken on the Central Street property until an environmental justice review is made. To do otherwise would jeopardize the large amount of tip funding slated for the intersection project at that location. At this point, it is necessary for PEG to attend weekly conference calls to resolve the situation. In March of '23, the Mass DOT agrees to pay for the environmental justice review, saving the cost to the town. So the roller coaster continues. We're doing well. We slip down. We come back up. We slip down. We come back up. The DOT further agrees to expedite the review so as not to jeopardize the acquisition of the Central Street property. In March of '23, being thrown another curve ball, the town is notified that its Mass Trail funds will not count toward the 4.1 million needed in aggregate funding. After further consultation with the Mass DOT, the DOT, the Mass Department of Transportation, agrees to provide the additional funds needed to meet the $1.5 million match. So the state came through in addition to what they were already doing. In May of 2023, BSC provides an overview of the trail design. In June of 2023, the town acquired the Central Street property. Just last month, Scoops of Hope opens and has a ribbon-cutting ceremony on July 26. This is significant as they are cited as one of the three property owners willing to invest in the town because of the rail trail. This was cited in the Economic Development Administration Travel, Tourism and Outdoor Recreation Grant application back in March of '22. So things that didn't look like they meant anything or didn't necessarily need to be done, or why did they need to be done, come together later on. Other potential investments are a restaurant at 12 Crane Street, the museum at 12 Crane Street, a restaurant opening at another location, and the Southbridge Hotel and Conference Center looking forward to marketing the proximity of the rail trail to its hotel and encouraging guests to eat downtown as more restaurants come into town. And here in August of '23, the town council takes a vote on the final design of the Quinabag Rail Trail. Just to give you a sense as to the amount of time and coordination it took, not to mention the passion and drive to help Southbridge succeed, PEG was the project leader and coordinator. She coordinated with two town managers, four town councils, counting this one, two, if not more, subcommittees of the town council over the course of the last few years, the ARPA committee, the BSC Group represented by Bill Paley and Jeff Fasser, along with various representatives of subspecialties involved in the planning, design and site work, the economic and planning department at Town Hall, the accounting department at Town Hall, the Southbridge Department of Public Works, the Recreation Department, the Rail Trail Committee, the Southbridge Redevelopment Authority, various town attorneys, the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, the U.S. Economic Development Administration, the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission, the Department of Conservation and Recreation. And if I missed any energy, any agency or individual, I apologize. But I hope the point is made. We also would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge and thank the prior and current governors' offices for their help and instruction as well in terms of putting this rail trail together. So it's not just an event for the community. It's an event that the state and the federal government also took interest in Southbridge for. And with PEG's dogged determination is coming to fruition. With that, I'd like to thank PEG Dean for all the work that she's done so far in putting this rail trail together. Thank you, PEG. Thank you.
Moving on to Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens that would like to address the council on anything that is not on the agenda tonight?
Good evening, council. Kevin Buxton, 149 Everett Street. I would like to address the council on the Trail Committee recruitment of members. We are a five-member body of the town. Presently, we have three sitting members. We're looking for at least two others. But in reality, we've been in a rebuilding state since COVID. When I came back after COVID, my membership had lapsed. I had to reapply for Trail Committee. And like I said, we have had a new member come on, but then we're still looking for additional members. So I don't know what else to say. Myself, I've been on various committees and boards in this town for about 30 years. You don't have to make that commitment for the Trail Committee. It's one meeting a month, typically around 6:30 on a Thursday evening when the town halls open. We, of course, PEG did not take a $5 million grant, hand it to me and say, Kevin, go design the rail trail. We're very happy having BS Group do their, the work. The Trail Committee, when I came back after COVID, I was very surprised to see PEG's efforts to get the trail, the rail trail up and financed. And I'm looking forward to every aspect of, as different sections open up, hopefully, we can enjoy our new rail trail through the center of town. So anybody out there looking for, to help our town develop and do a little maintenance on our trails, we're looking, we're looking for help. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to speak to any issues that are not on the agenda tonight? And no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion to suspend the rules to afford the same courtesy to Tri Valley Elder Services as we did to our appointments. I'd like to move Agenda Item Number 21.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Council Dow. Any discussion? All of a favor? Opposed? All right, we're going to move it over from, so we're on Agenda Item Number 21. Vote to accept the memorandum of agreement between the town of Southbridge and the Tri Valley Incorporated Nutrition Program and authorize a town manager to sign related documents. Your motion?
Second.
Your second?
Second.
Second by Council Marketti. Recommendation from Subcommittee Council Rivas?
This was a favorable recommendation, three zero.
Mr. Town Manager?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. When I first saw this, I thought it was kind of a routine thing that, you know, this had been a service that was down there, you know, for quite some time. Council Chenier brought to my attention the impact that this has on our senior center area. And last week, I did get down and talk with Katie about this. I had originally seen this when I first came on as interim town manager. I saw the operation down there, but there was very little activity and I didn't really get a clear understanding of the impact it has on our building itself down there. And since then, since we've got a new Council on Aging Director with a lot of ideas on building up more activities down at the center, it's my feeling really that this is not the proper place for this particular operation. And it would be my recommendation that rather than sign this agreement, we inform the Tri Valley and the Meals on Wheels that it would be good for them to find a new location and give them a reasonable time to look for that. Because I do think it has a really negative impact on the facility that we have down there to try to promote the opportunities that are down there and the activities we'd like to see.
Any other discussion by councils? Council Marketti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Threu. I'm voting yes on this agenda item. The Tri Valley Community Center, the Tri Valley Incorporated has been at the community center for a long, long time. They provide Meals on Wheels for homebound seniors, people with disabilities, caregivers. Sometimes it's the only meal they get. They also provide a wellness check. Not everyone is blessed with family members who live nearby and can check, can check in on their, their family. Now, I did go down to the community center with Council Chenier, and he did point out that Tri Valley is taking up a lot of space in the kitchen. I would like to point out that in 2019, I advocated for funding to make improvements at the senior center, at the community center and the park. It's been neglected for years. I was at a PND Planning and Developing Subcommittee. Council Lazo was there. Council Adams was there. Council Jovan was there. They agreed with me. It has been neglected. We talked about making improvements down there. I asked for CDBG money. Recently, I've been asking for ARPA money to make these improvements. We could remodel the place, add more space, add a kitchen, maybe an activity center. I'm sure Tri Valley is willing to accommodate the senior center. I also know there's a, there's a pickleball tournament in the gym, game in the gymnasium. They take up a lot of space. No one's complaining about that. The councils are also saying that Tri Valley serves other communities, not just Southbridge. Tri Valley has served central Massachusetts communities since 1976. Forty-seven years they've been doing this. I will point out, the contract says packaging and delivery of Meals on Wheels for Southbridge residents. If there's a need, there's a need. I don't think it makes any difference where you live. I know a lot of residents who live out of town, born and raised right here in Southbridge. So I'm voting yes, as approved unanimously by the EHS Subcommittee. I'm not throwing Tri Valley out over some space issue, service area, or some other unknown reason. There's room for everyone down there. All we have to do is remodel the place. I think to vote against this is mean spirited and a bad move by this council. Thank you.
Council Mania?
Certainly. I certainly have nothing really bad to say about Meals on Wheels. Meals on Wheels is a great program that the tri-community area has enjoyed for many, many years. It's my understanding, though, that this particular use of this facility here in Southbridge for this assembly of the meals has only been in place for a few years. Prior to that, it was done in Stirwich, I believe. And so I, I just think that the impact it has on that space and the limited area we have, I think there may be an opportunity for another location to be found to actually do this work. And that was why my recommendation comes out at this point.
Council Rivas?
Well, I can appreciate the space issue. There, there are a lot of needs in that building. I know that our Council of Aging Director talked about at the EHS meeting that over 800 meals were delivered that particular week. And about 90% of those were to Southbridge residents. I think it's an important service in a time that there is food insecurity in our community in particular, you know, does have a lot of needs. I think it provides a great service. I, I do agree with Council Marketti. We probably need to think about the space issues in the community center. But getting rid of this program, we can do both of those things at the same time without getting rid of a program that is severely needed in our community. So I will be voting yes for this tonight.
Council Adams?
Did you say 800 meals? Thank you, Mr. Chair. 800 meals in the week?
Yeah, that's.
Ninety percent of them? So my question is, is if we vote no tonight on this, that means they're gone now, right? Tri Valley is out?
No, we, I talked with the town manager. I said, what if it's a yes vote? What if it's a no vote? If it's a no vote, the town manager, it's not like they're going to be booted out the door. They're going to work it, work with Tri Valley Elder Services for a placement that, in another location. That's the way I understood when we talked about it. It's not a throw them out the door option. It's a, the planning and development of that facility, the upgrades on the kitchen, they're going to end up being shut down anyways when we do an upgrade. So there's a lot of, a lot of things in the chute that are being worked.
So there's a lot of, a lot of things in the chute that are being worked on. And nobody's going to sit here and say, you don't want Meals on Wheels in your area. It's a great program. It's been here forever. I just think that, you know, what's coming up now is the actual director, our manager, there's different things that are going to be happening at our elderly center that probably weren't happening in the past due to the, the new director. There's a lot of vision and different programming that's going to happen. Probably was not there. But now going forward, you know, giving her the tools and the space for upgrades and whatever has to happen, we have to decide that. But they will not be booted out. I mean, they, I remember when they were at the high-rise, they have a kitchen in the dining room, and then they were in Stirbridge, and then they've, they've known to move around. But let's see what happens here tonight. Go ahead, Council Adams.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. I may have something else real quick, but I'm sure the ladies would like to have something to say as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other councils before I go to the podium? No second?
Chairman, if I may? Certainly. My name is Lisa Prince. I'm the Executive Director at Tri-Valley. I've worked there for over 25 years, and thank you all for your positive comments about Meals on Wheels. To offer some statistics, yes, we currently serve over 800 meals a week out of the Southbridge site. We occupy that kitchen three hours or less in the morning. I was there on Friday at 8:00 a.m., and Kathy and her staff were prepared for the day. We are able to be very flexible. We did not miss a meal delivery throughout COVID, even though the senior center was closed. So we are certainly able to pivot and work with any renovations or remodel that may occur. Ninety percent of those 800 meals do go to Southbridge residents. We were asked to leave Stirbridge as they began their remodel of the senior center. We have never delivered Southbridge meals out of the Stirbridge Center. Charlton hired their own chef to offer their meals to their senior citizen residents. They then asked those older people to pay $7 per meal. Seven dollars, five days a week. The average meals donation in any town that we currently support, which is 25 towns in the central Mass area, we deliver roughly 1,500 meals a week. We get an average donation of 92 cents per meal. We do not require payment of any person that needs food. Ms. Rivas, in light of your food insecurity comment, we combat food insecurity. In the past 10 years, we have an emergency winter food project that Southbridge residents benefit. At least 50 members receive almost $200 of non-perishable food. We do that in every town that we support. Mr. Marquetti, it does not matter where people live. In this day and age, with the cost of everything, and every one of our wallets going up, our referrals in the past two months have increased 25%. People are not asked to pay for this meal. We deliver it. I'm joined tonight by a fabulous crew from Southbridge, the site coordinator that shows up at 8 o'clock every morning. Three of our dry, at least three of our drivers are a former driver. And again, to your point, it isn't just a meal. You can bring mom's meals in and get a frozen meal. You can call Grubhub. You can visit Zoe's Pizza. You get a friendly face showing up at your door, making sure that you're all right. Throughout COVID, many times, as you mentioned, we were the only people that older adults saw on a daily basis. We have literally saved people's lives, not only with the delivery of food, but with the face at the door. We have an emergency process. If we delivered a meal and the person does not answer the door, we reach out to their emergency contact, sometimes to find out that they're at Foxwoods, or that they're at the hairdresser and they forgot to call us, sometimes to find out that someone's been lying on the floor all weekend and we're waiting for us to show up. We are much more than a three-hour imposition Monday through Friday at your community center, and we are more than happy to adapt and accommodate anything that the town would like to encourage us to do. Again, throughout COVID, we delivered from your parking lot. Do you have anything to add, Kristen? Kristen McCarthy is the Director of our nutrition program.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for, for hearing us. Southbridge gets, as Lisa said, 90% of the meals that are delivered from the Southbridge site. I do have to correct you, we are doing Tri-Valley as a whole, almost 1,000 meals a day, just for all of our communities. We work with a lot of Council on Agings and a lot of senior centers. Our program within those buildings is an asset. It's a benefit. They can tie activities in and have lunches with our program. We can do special lunches with our caterer. We can do soup and sandwich. We can do hot dog bars, pasta bars. We can coordinate to make fun events. We aren't there to take up space, to impose. We're there to work together, and we always have. And Southbridge has always been friendly and accommodating to us. We have been here for a long time, as you mentioned, the high-rise, then we were down at what's now the registry, now we're up at the community center. We've been doing this for a long time. We did never deliver Southbridge out of Stirbridge. Stirbridge was always separate, and they've only come here temporarily because our hope is as soon as they get into their new facility, we will be back there delivering to the Stirbridge residents. But putting them in Southbridge for now was the best way we could accommodate people, continue to get the meals, keep them healthy, keep them independent, keep them in their homes. This is a vital service. Southbridge residents are very happy to see our drivers at their door to get these meals, and we would very much like to work with you and to have you continue to host us. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman? Council Dow for us, he has his hand up.
Thank you, Chair, through you, through Town Manager. Is that kitchen full legal to be serving the public? It's illegally, like a huge fire suppression systems? It's, it's full legal kitchen to be served to public?
I believe that the food is actually prepared elsewhere and brought in. They only really use, I think, one of the, one of the ovens there for heating up things when they need to. The food isn't really prepared there. It's just assembled and packaged there.
Again, if I could offer clarification?
Go ahead.
The, the food is actually delivered by a caterer every day. We don't do any food preparation in the kitchen. We do food packaging. So the food comes in, our volunteers arrive, they put the meals into the container, they then deliver it in temperature-controlled bags to each of the homes. And if a meal goes past time, perhaps it wasn't used on that route, it comes back, it does have to be discarded. And all of our staff and volunteers are serve safe certified, as well as first aid and CPR.
That's great, then. It's easy to relocate them. They don't need a full kitchen, and the town have a lot of empty building. I think it shouldn't be hard to relocate, you know, put them somewhere, you know, and let the seniors enjoy their building. I think it shouldn't be a hard time if they don't need a full kitchen. Thank you.
Council Chenier?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'm the bad guy that started this off. Prior to becoming a counselor, I, I joined a, I came to the realization that I'm a senior citizen. I'm 68 years old.
Well, I'll get there one day.
We will. And, and I struggle, I struggled with this for, for a while. I started going to the senior center when the elder bus director was down there to say what they had to offer. At that meeting, I was approached by a lady that used to do, used to do cooking in that kitchen and asked if I would be willing to put on a luncheon. We went to the then-director Pat, and we were told no, we weren't able to use the kitchen because we interfered with the Meals on Wheels program. Now, I've been at the, I've been at the senior center multiple times since then to speak to Katie. Some of the problems we have in that center, there's no place that anybody can talk in confidence to the director of Meals on Wheels. People are there with her, her little cubicle, if you want to call it. So I don't want to just, I don't want to get in a match or two to say about the hours, but I've been there at all different kinds of hours. And I'm told that they basically Meals on Wheels takes over from 8:00 in the morning till 12 to 1:00 because they leave to go deliver their meals at 10:00. But then they come back, and they have to bring their things, and they got to take it apart. So prior to Katie getting there, Katie asked the people at Meals on Wheels to put some stuff away, but the tables are still left there. The warming, all the warming stuff is there. So when Meals on Wheels start their programming to get everything going and do their packaging, they got a petition wall that they close. Half the building is out of use for the elderly. So I, I was concerned about that because of the fact that the program, I knew, after coming on the council, I knew that the program at, for the elderly was, was going to expand. The new lady had plenty of ideas on how to do things, and it was expanding. She wanted to bring people back that go to Stirbridge and Charlton because they have much better senior centers than we do. The senior center was originally moved from the Registry of Motor Vehicles to where they were, and the town promised year after year to do something for the senior citizens. Year after year, their space got smaller and smaller. They had a room, they used to have a pool table at in the back over there. They sold the pool table or gave it away and took that room away. They use it for the exercise program now. During the course of the summer, the Kids, Cops for Kids program is there, and the Southbridge Recreation Program is there. So that main room, the main hall, if you want to call it the gym, is out of use to the seniors. During the summer, the winter months, fall months, the pickleball comes in there, and they, they pay rent like everybody else. They pay $30 an hour. I know Meals on Wheels pays $100 a month, and that's a token amount. I understand that part of it. It costs us more money to have Meals on Wheels there than it actually receives. So seeing all those kind of things, I, I started going to some of the events that they had, the ice cream thing that was put on by, I think, Tri-Valley, and now they got the hot dog roast going over tomorrow. The biggest complaint that I've heard from the elderly that utilize that small space is the fact that they feel unwelcome. They feel unwelcome, they're talked down to sometimes, and it's just, that's the biggest complaint. So I spoke to the town manager about this, and, you know, we're going through a lot of changes here in Town Hall, and I kind of said, okay, let's, let's work with them for, you know, make it a year, let's give them their memorandum of agreement, and let's see what we can do. And that's what happened on Wednesday night. They went there, and the town manager hadn't had a chance to go speak to Katie. On Thursday, after this was done, the manager spoke to Katie, and I believe Katie's in agreement after speaking with you that the program's expanding. More and more elderly is going, and they, they need the space. I under, I truly understand Meals on Wheels is an important aspects of this community. I, I fully understand that. You're not going to go away. I also understand that part of it. You're going to look to find a location if you don't have a location at, at there. I think the scare tactics that are being given to some of the elderly is terrible. I live with some of the elderly on a tag, and they're concerned that they were told that they're going to lose their Meals on Wheels, which is wrong. But it's a, it's a difficult decision. And I just think, I think, given the town, the elderly, a promise that we made a long time ago, and working with Tri-Valley, to find another location that's suitable, I think is a win for everybody. And that's what, that's the reason why, you know, I, I, you do wonderful things, and I just, I'm an elderly, and I want to serve our elderly, that's my.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Steve Adams had his name up, I mean, hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Based on, on the contract here, 30-day notice has been given. I know the chair, as far as the chair, we don't want, obviously, tomorrow to stop, but the way the, the motion is read and all that kind of stuff, it, basically, you got 30 days to pack up. And, you know, I, I will say, during COVID, you were open. I know what Tri-Valley does. It does for its veterans and its seniors and all the good and hard work you guys do. And I also know what Meals on Wheels does for our seniors. Almost 20% of our seniors, based off the math that you've provided me, 20% of our seniors receives Meals on Wheels throughout the week. So I, I can go on to details about the town manager before, not Charlie here, but the previous town manager and all this stuff, but I'm going to make a motion to amend this to vote to accept the memorandum of agreement for a period of four months, starting September 1st, 2023, ending January 2024, between the Town of Southbridge and Tri-Valley Incorporated Nutrition Program and authorize the town manager to sign all related document, paperwork.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
No, no.
I'll second it.
Is there a second? There's a second for discussion. Council Chenier?
Dave, my understanding in your motion is that you're giving, you're, at the end of the four months, they would have to leave.
My, 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 Mr. Chair, if you may.
Through the chair.
If I may. Through the chair. We have a new town manager coming on Monday. We also have a brand-new coordinator within there. It gives the time for the town to do its research, help out Tri-Valley, or work out something else based on the information you just provided, ma'am, as far as, there is no cooking, no nothing that goes on in there because that kitchen needs to be shut down or, or it, it needs to be redeveloped. And I think it's the town council's responsibility to redevelop that kitchen along with Katie in the near future to help the seniors in our community progress with our programs. But that's my, my thing is if, if the town manager could work it out somehow or another, we're just basically giving a timeline. This is a 30-day timeline to me. I'm asking for four months.
Okay, that's.
That's all I have.
Hey, exactly.
Yep.
Mr. Monteggie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to speak to the original motion, certainly.
Speak to the amendment. We'll talk about the main motion after the amendment.
Yeah, no, I don't have any, I don't have anything to say then. Thanks.
Anybody else have any further discussion? Council Daniels, turn the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, toward you. I stand in support of Councilor Adams' amendment. I think he makes a good point by saying that there's a, there are changes in personnel that the situation needs to be looked at in its entirety and not be rushed, and therefore I will stand in support of the amendment. Thank you.
Council Dow?
Thank you, Chair, through you. I also support the motion, Council Adam. I think 30 days is not enough to find a place, as a lot of people depend on that meal, and we're just going to ask the senior to be patient on us, and hopefully, everything will work both side. So thank you.
Council Monteggie?
Thank you, through you, to maybe, Council Adams, what was the date of the January?
Well, I, Mr. Chair, through you, it started September 1st because we're at the end of the month, through January 1st, 2024.
Okay, and thank you. So the, it's my understanding that if, if we do this, then January 1st, unless there's a new agreement created, they are supposed to vacate by January 1st. Is that correct, if this were to be approved?
Correct. Yes.
There's no 30 days extra till February 1st?
Chairperson, if I may.
I would just, you're extending the time. It's an extension, and extending four months. The director, okay, I know we got a new town manager, but this thing's been hashed out with the director, with the manager, and the programming at the, at the elderly center is moving forward. It might crash together. So I was thinking, if we gave them a 60-day extension, we can revisit it in 60 days if we don't relocate them. But to give them a long four, four months, I'm voting against the amendment. I, I don't think that would be fair to Katie and the elderly center. I know where this elderly center is going. Eventually, they're going to have to leave. We don't want to push them out. It's a great program. Four months, to me, is a little bit too long. I do agree with Council Adams as far as the extension because the contract, the contract is written, 30 days. But we can also extend that if we had to. In 30 days, extend it. So give them 60 days and then deal with it in 60 days. I know what Katie's answer is going to be. I already know what's going on over there as far as where we were, where we are, where we're going. I'm not one that wants to push, kick the can down the road too far. I'd rather deal with it. These people need to know their destiny, their destination of where they're going to be. We can't just four months, three months. It's going to be, you know what I'm saying? So vote your conscience, but myself, if it was a two-month extension, I'd go for it. Four months, I can't support. Thank you. Any other discussion by councils? Would you like to comment? I know you. No further discussion?
Kevin Buckson, 149 Everett Street. In reference to Mr. Marquetti's comments of the ban, the building's utilization, I've attended two meetings at that building. The meeting room to the far right-hand side when you enter the door. I attended a recreation committee meeting there. There was a, five members on the committee and maybe two or three people in the audience. That room will usually take. That room will usually take all these chairs. The space next to the kitchen, going left, which I assume was the dining hall or being so close to the kitchen, I attended a meeting a long time ago in that for the Democratic That meeting, I think, was maybe nine or ten. That room itself could house all these chairs. So yes, the senior center needs to be reevaluated for utilization, and guess what? In a community the size of Southbridge, maybe we need more than one senior center. There's a lot to be looked into. I, I understand the council needs to vote, but I think this was a, a tough issue. Thank you.
Thank you. On the, on the amendment.
I'd love to hear from the director, if she's willing to, I think Katie's here.
Counselor Rivas would like you to speak.
Hello. I was just curious about your recommendation in light of the amendment, because I know at the EHS meeting, I don't know, I got the impression that you wanted the agreement to go forward, so I just, I just wanted to clarify.
I do know, I do agree Meals on Wheels is great. I mean, in the short amount of time that I've been there, I've been there just over a month now. When I first started, they were doing about seven seventy meals a week, and in just that short time, they popped over to eight hundred, and from my understanding, come wintertime, that's gonna increase even more. It is a great program. I also have had people come to me saying, and I've spoken this freely, that they don't feel comfortable there, they feel unwelcome, they feel like they're secondary to Tri Valley, that it has taken over more than what it should have, and like Counselor Shinier said, people were asking, you know, can we have meals, can we do meals and whatnot? So I did question that, because I was also told by numerous people, we were shot down because Tri Valley is here. So I did look into that, I was told that was not true. So I, somewhere in between, there's the truth, I don't know specifically what happened between that. Like I said, I had different people from different clicks, outlets, whatever, say this to me, it is, there was things taking up the room. I have spoken with the onsite director, and she's started because it was done a certain way pre-COVID, and then when COVID happened, things kind of changed a little bit, because obviously, there was nobody in the building. So I did speak to her, and she said, this is how we did it pre-COVID, I'll go back to doing that, and she started putting her stuff back where it goes, so then this way, I do have a little more room. One of the biggest complaints that I have is the fact that they can't use the kitchen. Like, when I have groups there in the morning, doors get shut. If they need something in the kitchen, they have to walk all the way around, and they're enclosed in that one little half of the room. I personally, like, I spoke with Mr., actually, Charlie, I don't know. When I spoke with Charlie the other day, I said, and I did say to him, I said, I don't know, maybe the, I don't know how it was when it first started, how small, how big, or whatever, I said, but in just a month, it had increased so much. So I said, I don't know, maybe that's what it is, that it's just grown so much that it's taken over a little more than what it once did, you know, so.
If I could, I mean, just, thank you, Mr. Chair, just very briefly, I mean, I certainly have, you know, no concern about the value of Meals on Wheels, it does a great job and so forth. But, I mean, I think we all recognize, we really don't have a great facility down there. I mean, I, you know, I've been very familiar with the Sturbridge Senior Center, my, my sister-in-law ran the one in Milbury for many years, and it's a space that allows the seniors to have much more use for different things, playing cards, other things they do, and that place really doesn't have it. And from what I saw there with the way everything was, you know, taken up with the assembly line for the food, it really has, I think, a negative impact on it. I think that if the council can come up with some way, you know, to extend this, to see whether or not they can find a better location that would suit them better and allow the senior center to be used for the primary use that it should be, I think that would be a good idea. I understand what Counselor Marquetti's saying about how it would be good to invest in that and make improvements down there, but clearly, we're talking in a matter of, you know, years or months, two years, instead of real short time, because a lot needs to be done there. So I I think anything can be done to open up the dialogue to see that if a better location could be found to allow the senior center to function better, I think that would be in the best interest for the town.
Any further discussion by counsel? Thank you, Katie. The amendment is to extend the agreement four months, correct, Counsel Adams?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion on the amendment? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Does not pass. Five, three. Wait a minute.
Like a roll call, please.
Roll call vote.
Thank you.
Good idea.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Dow.
No.
Counselor Lazo.
No.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Montigny.
No.
Counselor Ortiz.
No.
Counselor Rivas.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Shinier.
No.
I propose.
Main motion, back to the main motion, amendment fails. Any further discussion on the main motion? Counselor Montigny.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna support the town manager's recommendation tonight, and I know firsthand in Ms. Alicia Tilton's leadership experience and her ability to run a kitchen as well. But the the main point here is it made it sound like, oh, we temporarily serve Sturbridge, but we never serve Southbridge when we were in Sturbridge before, almost like, if we leave, we're not gonna help you. And then the real turning point was when you don't need a kitchen. I feel like for the last four weeks on this issue, I've been sold the fake sale of goods right now, and if you don't need a kitchen, you don't need the Southbridge Community Center. This program is gonna thrive somewhere, and I'm sure there are a number of places in Southbridge where this program can be held if it doesn't need a kitchen, and if it's negatively impacting our community center, I'm not supporting any amendments, and I'm supporting the town manager's recommendation. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the main motion? No further discussion, roll call vote.
Counselor Dow.
No.
Counselor Lazo.
No.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Montigny.
No.
Counselor Ortiz.
No.
Counselor Rivas.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Shinier.
No.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Motion fails. I want to footnote something at this time. Jack Joe Van, he's sitting here, he's watching this unfold. Right now, this agreement says thirty days left on their contract. What I am gonna do is sit down with the new town manager, and we are gonna hash out if there's an extension needed. You have one of the most fantastic programs that 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 we have in the area, nobody will ever argue that point. The transition of a new director and a new elderly center, maybe there's other space in the same building, as one gentleman said, maybe, I know at Southbridge High School, I mean, we got space every which way, it's just a matter of finding the right space for you, so we can accommodate the elderly, and we can accommodate the Tri Valley. So it's thirty days, but I know Count Jack Joe Van and myself will be sitting down, this will be a top issue. Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item number nine, vote to approve the BSC Group Groups Kuneborg Valley Rail Trail Design. Your motion. So move.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Counselor.
Did you want them to present something first, or?
Would you like to say something first, Dave?
I leave it to the council whether you would like Bill Paley from BSC Group to present anything. The Planning and Development Subcommittee went into a presentation and discussed at length the the design and had some pictures to accompany. We don't want to take up any more of the town council's time than you would like, so we leave it up to you.
Counselors' recommendations for Subcommittee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. The vote was five zero in support.
Any discussion by counselors? Any questions, Counsel? Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I'll be voting no on this tonight. It's my own opinion that this is, rail trail design is a poor design. It's unsafe, you have residents coming off the trail at East, on East Main Street, crisscrossing East Main, to get back on the trail, around the rotary, back on the trail by Dresser Park. There's no, the reason for that is there's no walkover bridge over Main Street. Now, Ms. Dean says that she has talked to the engineers who are working on the redesign of East Main with the Mass Works Grant, and they have said they're going to move the sidewalks to the other side. But I don't see that. I don't see any material, no backup material proving that that's what they're gonna do. I know the town manager sent me information about that East Main Street project. It's way over budget. I sometimes wonder if it'll even see the light of day. If it does, there's gonna be a massive change order coming. I also know that downtown, there's a tip project, another crisscrossing of the major intersection down there. Foster Street and Hook Street will be closed off, Larishell Way will be extended to Central Street and Foster, that is going to be a heavily congested area, and that is right where the trail is gonna be crossing. And then you have back on the trail, then back off the trail again on River and Crane Street. Up Mill Street, a zigzag on Mill Street with a couple of blind spots, and then down to West Street crossover again, crossing over Main Street, which is heavily traveled, four roads converging on one intersection. In addition to that, I've heard from several residents that have told me about some concerns they have about the safety on that trail, finding syringes up off the Ashland Avenue Trail, finding homeless.
Out of order, Rob.
Excuse me?
Why he's gonna talk about this now, this ringers, that's a new.
Are you talking about the rail trail, versus what the plan is, the rail trail?
He's talking different locations.
What, I didn't catch that. Did you go off?
It's part of the trail, the whole thing is part of the trail. I don't know, I don't know if that's going to be a problem on the trail, but would you want to jog on a trail like that? I don't know. So I'm gonna be voting no. I have a feeling I'm gonna be the lone no vote tonight. I have talked to a few residents that say you're gonna be outvoted eight to one, but I'm never worried about that. I, I'm a person, I, I cause it how I sees it. I don't vote along just to get along. I'd like to see this go back to the drawing board, like to see a better design on this. I'd like to see a bridge over Main Street. If the state wants us to have this trail, then they should pony up and pay for that bridge. We have other pressing infrastructure needs in this town, we have a fire station, we have other roads and sidewalks, we have curbside, so I'd like to see some funding for those. For this, my opinion, needs to go back to the drawing board. Thank you.
Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. Enough. This is why the citizen vote, new counselors, young, open vision mind, they want change. Enough say no, let's move forward. Every, every community have a trail. Stop making excuses, traffic and needle and this and that. We need to move forward, we're on almost twenty-three century. I think time to move on, I think time to improve Southbridge for all of us, not only Pacific people. I think the council, previous counselor, and, and now, this counselor doing a great job, changing a lot of things in the town, the money, it's rent, we're not digging in your pocket, Counselor, okay? So I think, I think it's enough. I'm gonna support it. Anything new for the town, anything will improve Southbridge and have the residents walk outside, a breed fresh air, enjoy our water view, nobody know it. So I think it's time to move forward. I'm gonna support it this time. Thank you.
Any other discussion by any other counselors? Counselor Shinier?
If I may, through you, to Ms. Dean. The other day, you had the BSC, BSC Group at the Subcommittee meeting, and at that Subcommittee meeting, am I understood, did I understood correctly that you plan on building a sidewalk across from the river? So the people that come off the trail will be on that sidewalk, stay on that side of the road and cross over somewhere around Maple Street?
If I may, through you, I should clarify that the design tonight that's being voted for, that stretch that comes off of the easement you approved at K Street Parking Lot, the stretch from there to the rotary is outside of BSC's scope. Based on the town council's input to me at one of the recent meetings about how they didn't like the idea of the multiple crossing over, I went back to BSC Group, they said, do as the town wishes. We ran it by McClure Engineering, who is the one who's designing East Main Street project, working with DPW. DPW thought it was a great idea, and so if we can stay on the non-riverside, we'll have a shared use path ten feet wide on the non-riverside, so that there isn't the, having to cross over the rotary multiple times. So you stay on the the non-riverside, you come up, and then you would cross over across from the new memorial, Veterans Memorial Park. And so that is, we have a change order, although you haven't necessarily seen it in front of Town Council yet. DPW and I met with McClure Engineering last week, they'll be bringing a, a change order to us to bring to you, hopefully, at the next DPW Subcommittee, for us to then do the construction next year. Funding, I believe, is already committed for that project, for the East Main Street project, but the, at least the portion that that I have is Mass Works, it's already funded, so there shouldn't be anything holding that up. And then with regards to the, so hopefully, that answers your question.
You did.
And then we will keep the the sidewalk on the riverside, just, it will not be the wide, it'll just be, we'll, we'll do a new ADA sidewalk on that side of the street. So it'll be an improvement on both sides of the street. With regards to the blight that goes to the point about having needles or, you know, unsightly activity or things that shouldn't be happening on the trail, studies show that when you put in the rail trail, you increase the amount of eyes out in the public, you reduce the amount of derelict activity, it increases safety, however you want to coin it, Counselor Montigny, whether it's derelict, or, you know, whenever it's inappropriate activity, we, we want to curb that as much as possible, and we think the rail trail will help with that. With regards to the, and we'd met with, for the record, Counselor Daniel, Counselor Marquetti, his wife, and we went over all of these problem areas, and I thought that, that we'd satisfied a lot of the questions. It's unfortunate, I didn't realize you walked away unhappy with all the circumstances. The, the downtown tip project that the Froster Street and the other sections intersect with, I thought that the designers did a great job of, of working together to make sure that that new tip project works in concert with the rail trail right through the downtown. And then the Main Street, I too feel like it's a, it's a concern, and I have asked CMR PC to please consider helping us devise a safety plan for that intersection beyond what we're doing in the rail trail, but in the future. Can we revisit how to, how to best cross that street? What BSC has proposed is that we cross right at Mill Street, right at the gas station, and then we go up West Street, but are there other ways to consider that more so in the future, improving that? But that would be a little more of a, an orchestrated effort.
Mr. Chairman, if I could continue?
Continue.
I, I've been on many trails. I've been on, you took Charles River Trail, down Huntington Avenue on Boston, where the bike trail is a bus trail also. When you're on a bicycle, you gotta use your common sense, and I've been to Westville, I've done all the trails at Westville, up by the Calcutta, Calcutta Bridge, across to, crossing eighty-four on the bridges, and, and I think the designs we spoke about are good. We've been, me and Counsel Dow went to the planning board, and we were had also, so I'm supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I'd just like to relinquish the gavel for a quick minute. I'm a big advocate of the rail trail from day one. The thing is evolving into different things that weren't gonna happen in the beginning, which creates the frustration of Marquetti. But then I share the aggressiveness of a Dow, where we say, we're not kicking this down the road, we're gonna adjust on the fly, and we're gonna get the job done. But the thing is, if somebody drew a picture of the original trail and the trail, once it's done, it's got a lot of twists and turns in it. And I think that's what creates a little bit of frustration with citizens in town. They thought it was going this way, they thought there was gonna be a bridge. So I really commend Counselor. So I really commend councillor, um, Daniels for doing an update, kind of a, where we were, where we are, and where we're going. So if we're going in a different direction, crossing a street somewhere or doing it, you gotta adjust on the fly. We're too far in the tube right now to put it in reverse. So we need to keep moving forward and deal with the, what I call potholes on the project, and get the solutions and make it work. So I, I am gonna be supporting this. Thank you, Mr. Vice General. Any other discussion? Councillor Adams?
Thank you. Thank, I just wanna appreciate all the hard work over all the times and the fact that councillor Daniel pointed out that many town managers and the, the constant request for changes and all that kinda stuff. And we should be able, a project like this and the amount of money it's only costing local taxpayers is minimal compared to what it's gonna be able to bring down the road. So I thank you for all the hard work and your continued effort for our town and your town. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Eight to one.
Thank you.
You'll correct on that count.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to agenda. Moving on to agenda item number 12. Vote to confirm the town manager's recommendation to appoint Joanne Savanyak as interim treasurer-collecta with signing authority for an undetermined period of time.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion by Shinia, seconded by Dow. Discussion. If there's no discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? In unanimous of all present. Moving on to 13. Vote to confirm the town manager's recommendation to appoint Mark Jendrow to perform, I can't see it. Citrical reevaluation in the assessors' office to pay, to be paid from 0031415899008100. Reval services.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Dow. Discussion. If no discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? In unanimous of all present. Moving on to 14. Vote to approve the proposed chair yoga classes to be instructed by Chatrice Kalis twice a month on Tuesdays, funded by the State Formula Grant, and authorize the town manager to sign all, to sign any related documentation.
So moved.
Second.
The motion, seconded. Where is the discussion?
This is recommended with a 3-0 vote at the EHS meeting.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
It was recommended with, by a 3-0 vote at the EHS meeting.
Any other discussion? No? Councillor Dow?
Thank you through you. Is that like an extra day we're given? Is that something related to the past since? Cause it was, it was discussed in two different days and-
That was different versus Katie O'Gus. Different.
All right, so, um, what it is, it would be on Tuesdays twice a month to start off just to see how the feel is. Because when I first started, right away it was like, we want meals and we want yoga. Like those were the two, like, high demand things. So I reached out. This lady comes highly recommended from Sturbridge, and a lot of people actually from the YMCA have been taking classes there. And they've actually come to the senior center to sign up already so they could start taking the other exercise classes. So our regular classes are Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So these would be on Tuesdays, and they would also, they would be at 10 o'clock in the morning. So they would also be at the time that the Latino group is there. I know most of them take the elder bus, so going on other days sometimes isn't easiest for them. So if they wanted, the opportunity is right there. All they gotta do is walk over from one room to the next if they wanted to partake in the class.
Continue Chair through you please. Is that a new grant we have for the specific day?
It's the same grant. It's the same formula grant. We just have more money in the grant than what, than what pays just for the class that's there now.
So we have enough money to keep all the old days and add this?
To keep what we have now and add this. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? In unanimous of all present. Moving on to agenda item 15. Vote to accept the following donations made to the Recreation Department in support of the New England Handball Association Summer Youth Outreach Program. To be deposited into account number 21800048310066370. Recreation donations. A, $100 from Cornerstone Bank. B, $100 from Cormier Jewels. C, $300 from Southbridge Credit Union.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Montigny, seconded by Dow. Discussion.
This was also recommended favorably by a vote of 3-0 from the EHS.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to this item?
No, I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions, the director actor? Councillor Dow?
Thank you Chair, through you. I just wanna say thank you for Cornerstone Bank, Cormier Jewelry, and Southbridge Credit Union for supporting our, our young kid. And, uh, and I hope more business will come forward and do the same thing. Thank you.
Councillor Rivas?
I wanna thank Nancy Ortiz and the New England Handball Association for bringing this programming to our town. I know Nancy. I went to school with her. She's Southbridge native, who has been working really hard to bring handball clinics to our parks and have been working with the youth. I was lucky enough to see them the day that they did the ribbon cutting at Henry Street. So, yeah, I just wanted to add that.
Any other discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? In unanimous of all present.
Mr. Chair, agenda item number 16. Do you wanna read it off? I, I'm gonna make a recommendation to postpone this until the next meeting.
You can make a motion right now.
I'm gonna make a motion to postpone this to the next meeting.
There's a motion on the floor to postpone agenda item number 16, seconded by Dow. All those in favor? Opposed? In unanimous. Moving on to 17. Vote to approve the agreement with Guardian to install LED lights at the adult softball field, McMahon Field, Henry, Henry Street Field for $40,466, using $29,490.50 in the local opera funds approved on December 19, 2021, 22, excuse me, and $11,975.00 from the Southbridge Softball Association, and authorize the town manager to sign any related documents.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Shinia. Discussion.
In unanimous of all present, DPW.
What's that?
An unanimous of all present at the DPW.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? In unanimous of all present. Moving on to agenda item number 18. Vote to approve the annual renewal of Zen City Civil Space One Year Contract for $4,800, providing a project-based website.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Daniels. Discussion. There's no discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? In unanimous of all present. Moving on to 19. Vote to enter into a contract with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to hire a consultant to temporarily serve the town planner, as town planner, until December 31, 2023, or the town plan's vacancy is filled and authorize the town manager to sign any related documents.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Daniels, seconded by Dow. Councillor?
Subcommittee voted 5-0 in support of this item.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? In unanimous of all present. Moving on to 20. Vote to approve a transfer for $28,800 from planning salary and wages, to specialized services 001180530000, and return any remaining funds not used by temporary, temporary town planner back to the planning salary and wages.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Dow, seconded by Daniels. Peg Dean?
Yes, uh, the, the accountant corrected me. She would like the transfer to come from 00118051100. Planning, or excuse me, planning and salary wages is 001175511000 to specialized services in the same department account number 001175-530000. Because I have all economic development and planning in my finance view, I plucked from the economic development budget specialized services. It should be the planning specialized services. So if you could just amend the motion for the second account number to be 00117553000.
I'll make that motion. Second. Amendment. I'm sorry.
Motion on amendment, seconded by Shinia. It's a clerical amendment. Any discussion?
Nope.
If not, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Opposed? It is now amended. The main motion's in front of us.
I'm sorry, could I, could I?
I just wanna say thank you.
Could I just ask a question? Peg, uh, what's the name of the account that the, it's going to?
It's, oh, it's specialized services.
So it's just the, the plant, the name planning specialized service. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? In unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 21 was already taken care of. Agenda item number 22, councillor's forum. Councillor Rivas?
So I wanna, um, thank all the volunteers. I attended the senior send-off on Sunday, this past Sunday. It was great to see our recent graduates engaging with the community. And the volunteers, Gilletz Agosto, Miriam Saz, Kelly Landine, Detective Witherspoon and his wife, and all the volunteers that helped, and the donors who donated for the senior send-off to put this event together. I think it's important to continue supporting our students as they transition into the post-high school world and, you know, wishing them well. I also do think it's important to, um, to, to keep in mind the questions that Ms. Agosto asked us here in regards to the account in the budget, um, to the, in the school budget. And when our, you know, budget process starts again, that we have some questions about those accounts and the reimbursements to our students that, that piece is really important to keep in mind as we move forward. I also wanna mention a couple of other events coming up. I'm working with some community members from Seven Hills U-Wink, the Family Resource Center, to host a community listening session. The topic will be the schools. That will be at 5 o'clock at Optical Drive. And thank you to school committee member Carla de la Cruz for helping to put that together. This really is for our community, primarily parents and families, students, to come and talk about their experiences. We, uh, the group did collaborate with, um, uh, the student support department of the school district, that they're gonna provide refreshments and childcare for families because they are looking to start the CPAC group, which is a special needs parent advisory council. And again, led by the charge by our school committee member Carla de la Cruz. And parents who were at the last school committee meeting really expressing their concerns and their experiences. So I encourage families to come to that event. In una sesión para escuchar a las personas sobre la escuela, es septiembre 11 a las 5 p.m. in 5 Optical Drive in the Family Resource Center. The other, um, meeting or event that I encourage people to attend, the next school committee meeting on September 12 at 7 p.m. the receiver will be at this meeting presenting on this school year and giving us sort of an overview of last year. So I encourage, you know, whoever can come to that meeting and discuss some of the questions that we had at the last EHS meeting. It's really important for our community to come out and ask questions that we want answers to in regards to the receivership, how that is going, their turnaround plan. And again, I will continue to have these informational sessions for our residents. And the last event that I'm going to promote, Seven Hills U-Wink Resource Fair at Henry Street Field, Friday, September 15 from 3 to 6. It is the kickoff of Hispanic Heritage Month. This is the second year for this event. There are a lot of providers, and it is important for us to have events throughout our community. And I really appreciate Southbridge Community Connections for putting this event on along with our Recreation Department collaborating and bringing much-needed resources to that area of town. Thank you.
Councillor Dow?
Thank you Chair. Nothing at that time.
Councillor Shinia?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I just wanna let the public know that on Friday, September 1st at 1 p.m., there's gonna be a program at the senior center, A Penny for Your Thoughts by local residents Dick Leese and Bill Gibson of Richard Leese's Coin Appraisal. They're gonna give you the tips on the do's and don'ts of collecting and the proper way to store your coins, and they'll do some appraisals. Also on Thursday, August 31st at the senior center, 60-plus-year-old, there's 12 available appointments for haircuts. And it's a $10 charge, and that's being done by Brittany Cox of Beauties and Brits. Well, me and councillor Adams could probably use a little hairdo stuff, you know? And then the Casabon Senior Center invites you to join the UMass Extension Nutrition Program. And that's gonna be held on September 7th, September 14th, 21st, and 28th. Participants will receive a free cookbook, free items each lesson such as water bottles, food thermometers, a food tasting at each, each lesson. Workshops will be held in person from 12 to 1. Call the senior center to make arrangements with Katie. Also at the senior center, Coffee and Conversation presented by the Southbridge Credit Union on September 11th at 10 a.m. They're gonna, the bank's gonna be there to talk about scams on the rise, best known how to protect yourself. And it's gonna be Sarah Clark and Christine Abbott's is gonna be doing that for the senior center. Also at the senior center on October 2nd, 2023 at 10 a.m., the registry, with the registry of deeds Catherine Toomey and assistant probate Stephanie Fatman is going to be there. And they're gonna tell you the nuts and bolts on how the registry of deeds and probate court works together for the residents of Massachusetts. And that'll be open again on October 2nd. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Councillor Montigny?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I come today to talk about a Southbridge program that I had never visited before. It's been hard for me to keep this from some of my fellow council members for a few days. But, you know, sometimes when you just need a change or a rough patch, they say, drive a different route to work. Well, when I went to Big Bunny grocery shopping, I said, I'm gonna stop by the farmer's market. Because I know my cousin Kimberly has a booth up there, and I met so many other people from Southbridge and from around town. The first I met was Bruce Mallore. He does some faith-based woodworking. But I just, I gotta tell you, today is the transition between interim town manager to a permanent town manager, and I've brought gifts for everybody. And this won't take long. I promise you that. First for our town manager, Karen. I, I feel that you were very sophisticated, so there is a wine stopper for you. To our former chairman, a nice handmade pen. Oh, and it comes with this felt bag, too. There's also a woman named Denise Bernard from town, born and raised, valedictorian, class of '81. I guess her dad did some coaching around Southbridge High. But she has a, um, she makes stuff out of concrete. Little trinkets made out of concrete. So there's a couple people here who could benefit from that. The first, my goodness. Councillor Adams, I got you this United States Marine made of concrete, all decorated up. I also have another concrete. This concrete is for the chairman. She does- all decorated up. I also have another concrete. This concrete is for the chairman. She does gnomes and frogs, and I said, "Do you got anything football?" The chairman works with concrete. This guy's got a little football hat on. So I got animals for the three elected, the new elected town councillors. Counsel Ortiz, this is a goose. Counsel Dow, if you'll indulge my friends and pass this down, your new love for horses? I figured you might enjoy that.
Be careful.
Yeah, George, I got you the T-Rex. It kind of reminds me of all the good times I've spent with you. And then, I have, from my cousin Kim's booth, Jasmine, I got you a little bracelet. It's blue. You seem to be wearing blue today. How's that? To the vice chair, I know you as a '60s guy and as a el presidente, so here's a bandana tie-dye with red, white, and blue. To the recording clerk, this toy just goes on forever and ever, so if you ever hear us doing bylaws again, you can just sit here and use that. I think I've got everybody up here, right? That means there'd just be one left. This, and all these gifts were very cheap, don't worry, I didn't pay $50 for anything here, but this, made by the first gentleman, Bruce, it's, it's a bottle opener, and it's for our new town manager, Jack Jovan, but this one was made by a pine that comes from Dexter Russell, from an old piece of furniture, over 200 years old, from the oldest knife factory, and of course, it's in Southbridge, so this I'll pass on to you later and your family. And, well, I just remembered that the reason I ran, or the platform I ran on years ago, was for unity, and, and our chairman spoke of it when we hired the town manager, and after going and spending time at the farmer's market, who, they put on a great show. Thank you for, you know, the Big Bunny for allowing them to do it. They also pay out of pocket for music and entertainment down there sometimes, but I thought we should all start off the fall, the new school year, new football season, new manager, new everything, together, moving forward. People have called me a lot of things, but I'm proud to be called the town councillor of Southbridge, Massachusetts. Thank you very much.
Counsel Adams, can you top that?
No. I'm good, I'm good with not doing that, but I, but I appreciate it. Thank you, counselor, for that. I just want to let everybody know, ARPA, we'll have an ARPA meeting on the 31st of August. There's quite a few things on that, and then I'll be bringing that to the town council meeting on September 25. And then, Charlie, I wish you nothing but the best in the next. I know you got four days left and count, not that you're counting at all, but I wish you nothing, and thank you for all the hard work you did through the budget season and the fiasco that we, we, we did have here for time. I'm glad that, I don't know if you know this, but if you looked in the packet, this planner that's coming in part-time is Ken, who used to be here. Outstanding individual, did a lot for the community, did a lot for the planning side of the house, so I look forward to seeing him back. I just wanted to say congratulations to the lieutenants, the brand-new lieutenants that we have here in town of Southbridge. Thank you.
Counsel Ortiz?
I have nothing, thank you.
Counsel Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair Trujo. Charlie, thank you. You were a great help. You, you were a great help. Let's leave it there. It was really good working with you. Murals, concerts, trails. Why is it so hard sometimes for people in town, for councilors, to just agree, and maybe that's the problem, is just asking nine people to agree, but, and the towns talk as well. Why is it so hard sometimes for us to believe that this town needs nice things, too? There's more to this town than roads and infrastructure and administrative minutia. There's more to than just governance. People want nice things for this town. We're tired of the drab. You've got a miserable summer where everyone's complaining about the rain, people have got washouts, there's bad news on TV when you watch TV. What is wrong with us when we can't see the nice things that we're trying to do for this town? Outsiders will take notice of us and see that not only do we have nice roads, but we've got nice trails, that we've got a beautiful multicolored mural, which shows that there's some pride in the town, that we have concerts in two locations in town, except for all the ram rain. Why can't we see that? I don't have an answer to that. Two years as the council chair, two years as the vice chair, I didn't have an answer for that. But I am just frustrated, and now that I'm no longer the chair, I feel like I can say something. There's more to this town than roads. The roads are definitely important. We absolutely have to have good roads. I have no problem with that, but damn it, a trail's a nice thing, too. A mural's a nice thing. Taking care of our citizens through the use of opera funds is a nice thing. It's time that we look to that. It's time that we pay attention to that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Trujo. Just to answer, Counsel Daniel has a tax-paying citizen, someone who actually is paying property taxes in this town. There are a lot of things we spend money on that I just can't afford anymore. All right, thank you. Curbside, I recently emailed the town manager to ask about a curbside enterprise consultant that we had voted on back in March and again in June. This enterprise consultant would outline the costs and expenditures to create a rate structure for curbside garbage collection. Now, the town manager emailed me back and said it was too much money, and I pointed out to him that this is a grant. And the town manager said, "Well, grants are also taxpayers' money. So is the rail trail." Did you hear me, Counsel Dow? Grants are also tax dollars. Counsel Dow, thank you. So I would like to see this moved along. Second of all, I have gotten some comments from constituents about the town's website. They would like to see road alerts on that website. The area of Domino's Pizza down on Main Street and West Street gets flooded. They're not aware of it, and they drive into it, and they would like something put on the town's website to alert them so they know what's going on with flooding in town or other road problems. I also got a text message from a constituent who has asked that all the election signs be removed around town. The election is, town elections long gone. I know when I was running for town council, I had people constantly reminding me, "Don't forget to take your signs down." In fact, I think some of my signs were even removed before the election, so. I'd like to also ask for an update on the Raze Grant. We, when we voted on that, I think we were told we were gonna get an update in June. It's now at the end of August. I haven't seen one. The Ellis Road payments, from what I understand, and maybe it's changed by now, but the last thing I heard was that the contractor was not being paid, so he's left the job. I'd like the contractor to get paid. We need to finish this job. I'd like a status of the mask work grant. I believe that that was a sidewalk plan for businesses in town. I'd like to know what's going on with that. I haven't heard anything since. Status of the electric vehicle charging stations, speed feedback, school zone speed limit signs at Charlton Street School. When we voted on that, we were told this was going to be installed at the start of the school year, school year starting Monday, August 28. And one more thing, two more things. A little while ago, we had an, Ms. Yoder got up here and said she was the new CDBG coordinator, and I don't recall the town council taking a vote on that. I did ask the town manager about that. In accordance with, with council's rules, I went to the town manager first. He said he would get back to me. He hasn't gotten back to me since. Any appointment in any of the offices, town manager recommends, town council votes on approval. And finally, I would just like to say, the Autumn Fest is coming up, September 16. I always have a good time at that. We're put on by the downtown partnership, so I encourage everybody to get out and go to that event. It's really a good time, good band, good music, couple of beer tents. All have a good time. Unless you want to say something, the next?
You don't?
Yep.
Agenda item number 23, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Our next meeting is September 11, which is a solemn day in the history of this country, right here in the council chambers. Thank you.
We are motion adjourned.
Slow move.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Montigny. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present?
Dow was opposed.
Dow wants to sit here.